Okay, it being 8:44, we're open to the public hearing. In reference of the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 11 of the Self-Page Planning Board. We'll continue with public hearing on Wednesday, June 6th, 2018, at 8:15 PM in the G A R Hall of the Town Hall, 41 L Street. Self-Page Mass Purpose of the public hearing is to receive public comment and consider amendments to the self-Page zoning bylaws, adding a new definition in Article 3, Definitions, Section 300.541, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, RMD, adding Article 5, Section 502.35, Registered Marijuana Dispensary, and allowing such use with a special permit in general business, light industrial, heavy industrial zoning districts, and adding Article 19, Medical Marijuana and Registered Marijuana Dispensaries. Copy of the proposed amendment may be inspected at the Town Clerk's office during normal business hours. The original notice can be found electronically on www.telegram.com and on www.massmypublicationnotices.com. Any questions or wishes to be heard in the application should appear at the time and place designated. David Payer, Chairman, Self-Page Planning Board. Ken.
Okay, if I may. So, at the last public hearing, Mr. Spinelli provided a sheet which basically separated out all of the various uses in regards to any type of use that would be in accordance with the marijuana bylaw. So particularly, the difference between cultivation and the activities that are within a dispensary. And so, I took that as a guide as far as what was submitted, and I did prepare some amendments for you to look at in regards to separating those types of uses. For instance, RMD is the way the state defines that type of medical use in Mass General Law, and so it does include cultivates, possesses, processes, and then all of those other things that are in accordance with that particular definition. As you can see in the strike-through underlined version in red, right under that first definition, for the purposes of this bylaw, RMD shall be referred to as Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Centers and Registered Medical Marijuana Cultivation Centers. And there are specific definitions under that. I did find a model of this for the city of Framingham when they were looking at medical marijuana and splitting up those uses. So that was my attempt at looking at Mr. Spinelli's suggestions as to those specific different uses. The laboratory and the processing assembly packaging, because that is considered RMD, I did throw that in the dispensary center, and if you feel more comfortable adding those as specific uses, we would probably have to come up with...
Definition.
...definitions of those, as well as any additional conditions that you proposed with the central core standards and the standards for cultivation in the single-family zone. So, as I mentioned, these two new definitions through this process were introduced, and if someone were to apply for a special permit that wanted to do a cultivation center, as per the suggestion, it would be allowed in now, a single-family zone, as well as any non-residential zones with the specific conditions that are placed in it, and those are listed within the bylaw. Some other things that I addressed in here were based on the suggestion in regards to any sort of water usage plans. So, under 1903.1, letter M, details of proposed water usage and wastewater plants to any site that will include cultivation. So, we don't need to spell it out in, you know, in another area. I think this would be part of their site plan, and this would be supporting documentation that they would provide. Additionally, under letter N in that same section, there's a sentence added, additionally, if a cultivation facility evidence of contract or agreement to grow marijuana for a certified dispensary, and that was to address the standards for the cultivation if you were to be located in a single-family zone. Now, I think it should be applicable everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
So, this would be the coverall in this section. In 1903.2, as I mentioned in our last public hearing, I think we were all agreeable to removing the one-mile distance between cultivation, any sort of RMD facility. And then, so, the next section lists now a 500-foot buffer and a 250-foot buffer if located in the central core to those uses that are protected in the state law, which is the, basically any place where children congregate, and those types of uses are listed there. Under now the new section, letter B, no RMDs to be located within 500, okay, 250 feet. Sorry, I have to spell that out. But 250 feet of any residential zoning district, residential structure, or any non-conforming residential structures in non-residential districts. So, that is a change from the 500-foot buffer that we were originally, that we had present in our previous iteration of this. Under the new section, G, I listed 9:00 PM because I took a look at the pharmacies in town in the central core, and that is a suggestion. 9:00 PM is when their pharmacies close, so between the hours of 9:00 PM and 8:00 AM, including delivery services. Letter H, if a cultivation facility, this is to address the additional security measure, six-foot fence or screening with security top, for instance, a barbed wire should be erected for...
All right, I might want to check the barbed wire. I don't think is illegal anymore.
Well, I just put it down there because I wasn't sure if six-foot, I wanted to go up a little bit more. I didn't want to say an eight-foot thing. I wasn't sure how they do it. I just want to make sure people...
Security, I think a security top.
Razor wire, right?
Yeah, razor wire. No, actually, I've seen a lawsuit with the barbed wire.
How about striking that, for instance, barbed wire?
I was, just like, it should be, yeah, top, the security top should be erected. There it is. Just take a barbed wire.
Consisting of an angled fencing to the outside?
It could be anything. That's where we can do it under special permit, see what they're going to use.
Yeah, it would be under special permit, so that discussion would occur, and, you know, you could bring that up to the applicant. So, this has been a comment that I think has kind of been present in a lot of our public hearings in regards to buffers and locations in regards to, you know, these various different features. So, many towns that I was looking at as models for this, they included a location waiver. So, as you read here, the distance requirements may be reduced by 25% or less, but only if A, the applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment would otherwise be effectively prohibited within the municipality, and B, the applicant demonstrates that the marijuana establishment will employ adequate security measures to prevent diversion of marijuana to minors. So, if you were to look at, what, a 250-foot buffer and an applicant, normally they would automatically try, I'm assuming, to, you know, abide by the 250-foot buffer, but 25% of that, you know...
You don't know developers.
Well, no, I, yeah.
Come on, if it's in the bylaw, they're going for it. They're going for it, trust me.
But then, the planning board would have that, you know...
We could say, we, sorry.
Or, what about...
Well, if they come in with a very reasonable proposal, and the plan looks good, then...
What this does, this gives us...
I'm shocking myself with my ease.
This gives us an area where we can't foresee every single location in town. This gives us an area where if someone can come in and prove that they can do it, it gives us the option.
Yep.
It gives the developer an option. It gives, but we still have control.
And basically, that is it for the major amendments to that. Now, in the table of use regulations, you would add those additional uses, but I did not put retail, or, sorry, registered medical dispensary as a use, and instead just relied on those two uses because in the definition, we do say, for the purposes of the bylaw, that we're going to use those two.
And they're described in the definitions.
And they're described. So, the medical cultivation center is now its own use and would be allowed with a special permit in a single-family zone and all non-residential zones, and then Registered Medical Marijuana Dispensary Center in all non-residential zones.
Can I just talk a little bit, I think, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the definitions and the structuring. So, one thing I noticed, and very interesting missing last meeting, lots of things happen, but, you know, when I looked at, like, first your introductory here, when you had the, you list the section 502.35, you call it, you have Registered Medical Marijuana Center, right? Dispensary Center, I believe? According to this use, it's just a little confusing. I think it's supposed to be the cultivation center because it matches up with the zoning that you put there, right?
Oh, okay.
And so, here's my thought, too. So, RMD is Registered Marijuana Dispensary, and understand that under the state, they consider a couple of different things potentially in RMD. And specifically, we're talking about, there's two different pieces, the RMMC and the RMMDC. The way it's structured on here, I know that our intention is that when we say RMD, we're including both of them, but when you write it like this as its own separate section, it makes it look like, even though you're saying these two things are included in here, you almost carve them out and create some confusion where someone could come along and say that if something says RMD, there's confusion as to whether or not it applied to the cultivation center or just the dispensary. So, one thought I had was, instead of having it be 300.541, or 2, and 3, where you give them their own section titles, that you make them subsections. So, they're 300.541A and B, because then, everywhere throughout the document, when you refer to an RMD, you are including both of them in the definition. So, therefore, you know, now what this brings up, though, is, and I was just looking at your sheet here, for example, you had a few standards for specifically 502.36. Wouldn't you say that that should apply to a cultiv, all of these should apply to a cultivation center or a dispensary, especially things like if fence?
Here's the problem.
That kind of stuff?
Town manager politely said that some of these things are not germane to the planning board as such, but are really to be decisions of either town council or whatever, because they're not zoning. I didn't put these as set in stone. All I tried to do was to say, if, in a single-family zone...
This is all cycling.
I really thought these would be important things.
Right.
Now, whether they get in there at the end, I was...
Well, I think it's just important if we...
I'm kind of in favor of what I wrote.
Yeah, no, if we're specific about, first of all, just saying overarching RMD, these two things are both included under, because otherwise you'd get, for example, at 1903.2, Section B, no RMDs to be located within 500 feet of any residential zoning district. Well, technically, you're saying the cultivation center can be in a residential zoning district, so that, how can you have a buffer of 500 if it can be located within the zone? It creates a little bit, it's just a little confusing. So, I think if you, what you might want, what that means is, though, you might want to go back through some of these things and say, the question to ask yourself with every piece is to say, does this apply to an RMD, meaning everything, or does this apply to just one or the other?
Right.
Because then if you find enough that say, well, this should be the dispensary. So, dispensaries need signage and maybe lighting. Cultivation center, we don't want signs, we don't want lights, because that's probably going to be, potentially be in a residential. You want that to just be there and nobody knows, besides the butters who went in for the public hearing, you know, it's hidden. So, the rules might be a little different, and so we might want to separate that out. And then, and then I'm assuming for some of these things, too, you know, I was assuming when you talk about the certificate of registration or the agreement to lease, you know, that you do want that to apply to both. So, maybe you have RMD, here are the regulations, RMCC, here are some extras, RN, you know, dispensary-specific, here are their pieces.
Good point.
And I, that was my, that was just, I...
Yeah, I think that most...
My concern.
Most likely, where things would need to be clarified is in the site restriction section. I think the conditions are applicable to...
Right.
...all types of RMDs.
Yeah. There might be a few that you just need to...
Because it's particular to conditions you would place on your special permit.
Right.
And so, definitely.
So, that was why I liked that, just to clean. I know that this might be the way other people are doing it, but personally, I think, I think looking at it, we all know what we mean, but later on, I wouldn't want someone to come in and try to argue that we created some sort of inconsistency in the definition here, so therefore they use that to try to not have to abide by the RMD listed rules here. Because they would say, if you intended to make this a rule for a cultivation center, for example, you would not have carved out cultivation center as its own separate section, and then didn't reference it at all.
Right.
You know, so, it's just...
Good point.
I think it's just kind of that logic, that kind of how you look at it and structure. That's my legal side speaking, I think.
Well, we're lucky to have it.
Sorry.
So, the list of some of the items that Larry, you carefully put together, I look at, all of them are site plan related.
Yeah.
I just don't, I don't understand your comment earlier, because these all, these all require...
Well, these are all standards for the special permit.
Exactly.
I just, I put down what I thought was important to be, as a jump-off point.
And I don't understand why they're not...
I think they should be part of the planning board's standards for when you do this. In fact, I think these should be expanded.
You mean included in our regulations?
Well, either that, well, if you want to call it regulations or standards or whatever we have for when we get an application, if we get an application for a special permit, that these are some of the things that you can hand out and say, hey, look, you know, okay, you want to do this? Here's some of the standards. They may not include all of them, but these are the major things that we're going to be looking at during your special permit, application, process, whatever you want to call it, you know.
So, what would we be redoing our special permit and put a subsection for dispensaries?
I think we thought, this has come up during our zoning rewrite, and, because, you know, we had standards for home-based businesses, which are now going to be called customary, whatever, home occupation, and livestock under five acres.
Right.
We had different things, and we were told those things should be put into a document that we don't yet have called Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
But they're going to be writing one for us. They're going to help to...
So, that's what I'm saying. I think this is where those...
This is where this is going to go.
Mr. Chairman, question. With number five pertaining to the tax issue, we do not have jurisdiction over that.
No, that was part of the town manager's comment. I just put it in there because I read some articles, and I'm saying, well, you know what? If we're going to do this, then let's try to make as much as we can for the town. I'm trying to think on the town side, but it's not, it's not germane to us. I understand that. I just put it down there because here I was thinking, and I'm saying, you know, I hope they don't give this away if it ever does come here, and...
If you want to be honest, I disagree with that.
Are you talking about five under these? What are you talking about?
Number five right there, yes. I totally disagree with that tax issue, but again, it doesn't pertain to us, so we're going to move on.
Well, you know what, Mike? When I was reading about it, I don't know whether it was Uxbridge or...
Charlton.
Well, not Charlton. I, you know, Charlton is a...
Another town.
Well, it's a whole different situation. I mean, you know, this, they're putting the cart before the horse and everything else over there, and so I, you know, it's becoming, but there are other towns that had community agreements where they set it up with the company coming in here, and they had to, you know, they gave a $150,000 down payment, they were going to give 3% of their gross profits or their net profits. I, you know, I wasn't, you know, I was listening to it, but I was half there and half not there, and they were going to do other stuff. So, I said, okay, just as a, I made it just a point of discussion to say, okay, there should be something, and if it was in the central core, I said, let's put, whatever it is, let's put it back into the central core, because there's so many things that we want to do.
And they take money.
Now, that was, that was my feelings, and I'm not trying to sell it to anybody. I'm just trying to explain to you, Mike, why I put it in, and that was it.
Yeah.
Because I heard good things from other towns about what they were doing with this, and companies were more than willing to bend over backwards to do this kind of stuff. So, I said, well, okay, let's make sure we do something, that we don't just come one, come all, because I just, you know, I mean, I'm not in favor of this stuff. For medical stuff, okay.
One here comes to mind, and it starts with the letter E, but again, it doesn't pertain to us, so I wanted to...
Okay. No, no.
I would say, over the years, it's a common practice in many towns, if there's a very, an issue that comes up, that there's incentives that the developers will place with the municipalities to make, to put less burden on municipal services. And that's the way it's looked at. I know Sturbridge has done it for many years. I know many towns have done it.
We've done it through our tests.
So, it's not, it's not uncommon practice.
Yeah.
We've done it through our tests.
I put it down as an idea because I wanted to at least come out, throw the thing out there and be out there.
And I think that's going to be something that I think the...
I was doing such a 180 on this thing that I figured, hey, you know, if I'm going to do a 180...
It's going to be in town council hands.
Well, I was just going to toss it out.
Yep, and I think the town council has it, and it's going to be in their hands when they do an agreement with, that's where they're going to be able to negotiate, because they're the bargaining chip on that part of it, but...
And as an example, we asked and received $10,000 from Cumberland Farms, and because, you know, it's in the downtown, which is already a congested area, that and some money from, I forgot where it was, CBVG, that combined allowed us to do a special traffic audit, which is enabling the traffic improvements that we want to make, get on the tip list. So, it's very helpful.
Just for the record, I was not in favor of that $10,000 thing, as I was in the beginning, and I'm still not.
So, noted. Any comments from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm just, 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 I'm
Yes, see, the developers know upfront that we're going to be asking about it.
One thing to keep in mind too is that the dispensaries and cultivation centers, their actual grow facilities, go through the Department of Agriculture. That's part of their licensing. So they have specific requirements, but probably, it'll probably be something that's already laid out for the Department of Agriculture.
We just have a copy.
So I wonder, and some of these things even reference back to, you have to provide whatever is required under, you know, the DPH, you know, according to dispensary rules. So maybe you should, you could add in, or maybe add in a bullet that they need to submit whatever they did for the Department of Agriculture, and that kind of the plans or the, I don't know, the approval, proposal, whatever.
I don't think we need that, because as long as it says it here that you're going to be looking at water and wastewater, they'll just use it, and we'll get it.
They bring it in, and you use it, and you say, okay, this is acceptable, we're fine.
They bring it in, we get it in, now they don't have to redo it. But know what? At least they have here, we are going to be looking and asking for that standard. So they know upfront. I think that, if they have it, they have it.
And some of them, I mean, thinking, if we're thinking about people in single family, they might already have buildings and farms that are already, have been existence for a long time, doing whatever or not doing whatever, so they're really repurposing use rather than creating a new, you know, location. So that might be something to take into account too.
Hopefully that would be the case.
I was just going to say the same thing.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see.
Well, I hope so too.
Okay. So, yeah. Just point out, some of that stuff, some of this, obviously, would go to construction as well.
Yeah.
Right, right.
If we can jump down to 1903.2A, and I'm typing to refer to this now, the way this reads, I think you're referring to it out for a cultivation facility, because the indoor ones would have all of those things that they wouldn't need, they wouldn't need fencing because they're in a building.
Well, I actually think, I kind of disagree in the sense that I do think most cultivators, if they have a building, they are going to put like a keypad, they're more inclined to put a keypad security system. However, I could see the use for having an additional fence around that, just to have a buffer between the keypaded actual facility and then maybe a fence. I mean, maybe, the question is, should it be a requirement? I don't know. But I could see the value in having two layers rather than just, you know, a building with a keypaded entrance. Most of them, they're going to have cameras, they'll be keypading, they'll be-
The security system will be complex.
Yeah, they will be pretty complex, even for the farms, I'm sure. And I think that's required also under the plan, but I could see like a buffer zone of a fence, maybe just to create an additional deterrent, if you will.
And because it's a special permit, it can also be waived if it's felt that the applicant comes forward and he's got a plan that's reasonable and acceptable, you can waive some of these things. That's the beauty of the special permit itself.
True.
But it does, but if you don't list it-
Yeah.
You can't ask for a waiver.
It's exterior, though, it would apply.
Absolutely, absolutely. And last question I had was 1903.3A there. I just want to kind of clarification of what you mean by the applicant demonstrating that it would otherwise be effectively prohibited.
Oh, I think it's if we didn't reduce the distance requirement, they would not be able to operate.
Because what, because I can see that maybe coming up for like the first act, but what if you have a second act? Then how do you, how does that, by definition is obviously not prohibited, because there's somebody else here.
This looks like it's really, it has something to do specifically with the buffers, correct? The buffer distances?
That was, that's the way it was applied for the other towns that you advised, that's-
Right.
Is this supposed to mean like the location they've chosen, they don't have freedom with any other location? Like, so it's like this location or die? So therefore it's, it will be prohibited, or I guess it is confusing as to what it means.
Well, I think in some of the instances, like for example, the central core, you know, I went out on a limb, and I, we said, all right, 250 feet. I think where this would come in would be to say, okay, maybe this is 249.6. I'm being facetious, but I'm saying, say they have a real wonderful location, but it's 202 feet instead of 250 feet away from-
Yeah.
-another establishment. Well, okay, then I think if, if the, if the reasoning behind this thing is very good and it's acceptable to the board, then they should be granted a waiver to the 250 feet. Other than that, and I think that's the beauty of the special permit. The thing says that you look at every individual case, and I don't find it restrictive, I think it's pro Southridge all the way, and so that's, I don't have a problem with being able to grant a waiver. I think you want to do that in the right circumstance, at the right time, with the right application, the location is picked out, and, you know, you look at it and you say, geez, 48 feet? We're going to be ridiculous? Nah, no. So, I think that's what this is about. At least that was my interpretation on it. I was glad that it was put in, because I was almost thinking of decreasing the 250 feet, and I really didn't want to do that, but I also said, boy, what happens if there's something 202 feet away, and it's the perfect location and everything else, and, boy, I'm more than willing to do it if they meet all the other things, because I think, you know, especially in the central core, they can, if it's done right, it can be a bonus, it can be an attraction, it can attract other things in there.
I agree with that.
So, I'm more, I'm more than willing to have, allow a variation on that, because I think that's a good thing. But I don't want to change the 250 feet.
Right.
I was thinking of going down to 100, and I said, nah, can't do that, I just won't bite into that. But with this, I find it acceptable that we could look at something less than 250 feet, and, boy, this is a beautiful location, this really works, it's great, then we have the ability to go ahead and grant a permit if the board agrees on it. So I just thought it gave us a little bit of flexibility, that's-
No, I don't have a problem with flexibility, I'm just trying to figure out what that A actually means in terms of, how would they, how would they demonstrate that their business would otherwise be effectively prohibited by the municipality as a whole?
I think what you just described to us as what you meant by it isn't the way it's reading at all.
Yeah, exactly.
So just change the language to kind of match what you were saying, or actually, if you're leaving it open to this a location, like a location, we can waive the front, or the distance, we just take A out entirely, and just say the distance requirements may be reduced by 25% or less.
Oh, I like that, I like that.
At the board's discretion.
I don't have a problem.
And then leave in the second point that says, you know-
Well, the second point will come back to the whole security system. They're really, as I said before, they're really strict. I mean, they, as it is now, by law, they can't, miners can't get into these facilities anywhere, period. And nobody who doesn't have one of these cards can get in, and if it's a, other than, you know, the employees, obviously, will have key cards or whatever to get into the facility.
So what we're saying is that we want to leave, the beginning said, we want to leave out A and B, all we want to do is have the sentence in there, the distance requirements may be reduced by 25% or less.
At the discretion-
But only at the discretion of the planning board, based on the application presented, or something like that.
Or the-
And the factors.
I mean, are you intending this specifically just for the central core? Or in townwide as a whole?
No, I-
I mean, it makes, I think it makes some sense in the central core.
Well, I think it makes a lot of sense in the central core.
The space is a lot tighter, obviously, downtown, but-
No, yeah, I would, I would say for the time being, I would, I would leave it just for the central core.
I would take out the 25% then too, because I feel like we're limiting ourselves. I mean, if you're going to put it in a condition that we have discretion to waive it, why put a limitation on how much we can waive it?
Well, the problem is, at what point, at what point does it become arbitrary?
Correct, correct, and the thing is, is-
So you waive, you waive it for, let's say, 25 feet for this applicant-
Yeah.
But this other applicant has an identical plan with, say, an even stricter security system, but they need 150 feet.
Well, I do think-
I mean, granted, you have to draw the line somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I do think that we'll be able to, through looking at things, you could differentiate, but I do think if you leave in the 25%, it's kind of a bright line, 25% or less-
Yeah.
It won't give you the freedom to look at the 100-foot applicant.
Well, it does, because if they got a big, if they got a big site, see, I think it should be in proportion. If you got 100-acre site and you're going 25, 25% what? It's only central core though.
But this is the big one.
At the moment, it says in state central core.
It doesn't say central core, it just says across the board.
But if it was-
That makes sense.
Well, if you're talking about 250 feet and only 25%, you can only go down 25% of that.
But couldn't they file a variance with the ZBA to get a greater variance?
Yeah.
I think they could.
But this special, it's within the special permit. It's within the bylaw regulations on that.
Right, I mean, we, we could give up to 25%, but if they needed more, then they would really have to make a case to the ZBA.
That's a question that also is a question of overlapping jurisdiction.
Yeah, I don't see how the ZBA, if we're the granting authority on this, I don't see how the ZBA has, can override what we've put down.
I feel like it's extra work too. I mean, if we could just say, we have the right to waive it, we'll just, we'll figure out whether or not to waive it, but if we say, well, we're going to put this line in, and, ah, well, you know, that doesn't cross it, so you have to go over there.
I think the argument that we don't want them to go through any more than they have to is a good one.
What's-
However, I think if we had jurisdiction over 25% and the ZBA had more, I don't think that's overlapping, I think that's giving us a specific amount in them, you know, more.
Well, the thing is also with the 20, with the 25%, my thought on it would be, you know, you, you're, you gotta, if you give 25%, everyone's going to go for that 25%. If you give nothing, guess what? You're going to get it across the board. Every applicant is going to come in looking for a waiver. Every applicant is going to come looking for a waiver. You gotta have something there to, at least, like Sandy says, okay, we'll look at it and review, we have the purview of reviewing 25%, but after that, you're going to have to take a possible ZBA or not do it, or not get any more relief, or look at a different site. I really think going, leaving it open is just sort of negating the whole bylaw in general with buffers.
Yes.
So I would strongly support the 25%.
I guess my biggest problem is what, if we're responsible for writing all of this down, these bylaws down, and then we can be overridden by the ZBA?
We could on anything though, any zoning we do. We can.
Well, why, why don't they do this then?
Well, it's-
But they, but you got to remember, they got different, they got different standards. They cannot, they cannot issue a variance due to-
Whether it's beneficial-
It's got to be a topography, it's got to be a beneficial thing. They can't say, because the company wants to do a larger project to make more money, they can't issue a variance for that.
It's a hardship for them, you have to prove hardship.
They got to prove a hardship, with a variance, of why, why it has to be done this way.
Let's stay with the 25%.
I, I think that gives it, gives it a line to go off of, and then-
Will you clearly lay out 25%, and then if anything, anything more than that needs to go in front of the ZBA? Because I think otherwise, it's just people, yeah, you want people to do the research, but I think to Larry's point too, what he was talking about before, if they find a perfect spot, and it's only 100 feet, and I see 25% out of 250, and I know I'm way lower, if they don't spell out a recourse for me, and I don't ask Ken, they'll give up.
Okay.
They won't come in at all. I mean, we want, hopefully, it's somebody smart enough to do the due diligence, but you never know, this could be somebody like a farmer who sets up shop, and then they set up a cultivation center, and they want to go downtown and set up a plate, an actual dispensary to sell it, you know, and they, they're, you know, it's a collect, one of the collectives or something, you know, kind of not as educated.
Well, the central core-
All you have to do is spell it out.
Is a different ballgame anyway, because it's, that's going to be pure special permit, there is no zoning really-
Right.
From the ZBA in the central core.
Right.
But anyplace else, yes. And I think the history has been for us is that if, if, if it was more than 25% and each and every one of us thought it would, just like we did with Mr. Prue tonight a few months ago, we told him, hey, look, the smart thing was what? We sent him to the ZBA, to CYA, to cover his ass, to make sure that there was no problems later on. Well, then we would end up probably doing the same thing here, because if, if the application is attractive and you, everybody here feels good about it, but that's the sticking point, then by all means, let's move it forward and send it to the ZBA. All right, it may take a month or two, but-
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, you have to be practical, but I think you leave the 25% alone if it comes up, if it, and I don't ever foresee it coming up, but if it does come up, and there's something there, and this board agrees that it's beneficial to do it, you know-
I agree.
We'll send them on to the ZBA, let them do it. But, you know, I think we're trying to over-
Overtink it?
Overtink it a little bit. I think what we need to do is, you know, move this thing along, get it finalized, get it done, and then, then, you know, then it's up to the town council. If they don't like what we did, well, okay.
Back to the board.
My feeling is, no, my feeling is, let them write the darn thing the next time around and let them do it, because they're smart enough to figure out ours was junk, let them go.
Well, and I, the thing is-
I'm being facetious, but I'm not, in a way.
I think where we started, and I think we've proven-
Well, we started off at a weird thing-
We had to get something-
Because we had to get something on the books.
Okay, and look what we transformed into.
That's what I decided.
I think-
But there's a lot of what was in there is already, part of what the state has already done, but it just gave us the timeframe to do this and to protect it.
Correct, and I think we've, we've-
Too bad.
Heard from the people that spoke, and I know some of it's changed my mind, I've done some, quite a bit of research on medical marijuana, which I was uninformed on, and that changed my mind in a lot of ways. And I think we have a bylaw, I've seen a lot of different types of bylaws over the years. I think this zoning amendment right here, this zoning bylaw, is a great start, and I think it's something that, yeah, it might have to be tweaked on the road, it's not going to be perfect, there might be something coming up, but it's a point that I think protects the town and protects all the residents of the town, and it doesn't prohibit it, prohibit people that want to do a facility into town, and I think it's a win-win.
I agree, that's really good.
Well, you know what I'd like to do?
I know. Any other questions in the audience? Then do it.
I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing part of this, so that, well, I would like to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Input section is closed.